Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular council meeting for January 10th, 2023. In case you missed our season finale last year, it's a whole new cast. With that, we'll have an invocation led by Imam Abdul Samad Moti of the Islamic Center of Temecula Valley, followed by our flag salute by our mayor pro tem, Stu Stewart. Welcome.
First I should invoke it. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Dear God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our wonderful city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people and creation need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who are disagree with us and treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, oh Lord, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of human person. We ask this of you as your servants, who are in need of you, confident in your goodness, love, and mercy. Ameen. And may God bless us all, and may God bless America. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, please join me in saluting our flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Alexander.
I'm here.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Calphus.
Present.
Mayor Schwank.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Wonderful, thank you very much. We'll move straight into our presentations. We have two presentations tonight. The first is a presentation of certificates of recognition for state D1 cross-country championship to Great Oak High School cross-country team. At this time, I'd like to invite the Great Oak team down to the podium, and I'll go ahead and read the certificate. Welcome. Did you all run here?
We could have.
Yeah, you absolutely would have smoked it here, for sure. Okay, so presented on behalf of the City Council of the citizens of the city of Temecula to, this is the Great Oak High School cross-country team. The city of Temecula congratulates the cross-country team of the Great Oak High School Boys cross-country team for outstanding leadership. Okay, this is actually yours. I'm gonna switch, because this is slightly different. Okay, the city of Temecula congratulates, no, we're gonna go back. So these are all individual achievements. So the city of Temecula congratulates Tammy Drawn, head coach of the Great Oak High School Boys cross-country team for outstanding leadership and coaching the team to win the state D1 cross-country championship. The cross-country championship was held at Woodward Park on November 26, 2022. Victory at this championship qualified the team to compete in the national cross-country championship race called the Nike Cross Nationals in Portland, Oregon, on December 3rd, 2022. In that race, the Great Oak High School Boys placed sixth in a highly competitive national field. The city of Temecula would like to thank Tammy for fostering environment of teamwork, dedication, and excellence amongst the students, athletes, in the Great Oak Boys cross-country team, and wishes Tammy continued success in future endeavors. At this time, I'm gonna ask our mayor pro tem, Stewart, to head down and hand these out, and if you'd like to go ahead and make some comments, we would certainly appreciate that, and then we could hear from the team as well.
Absolutely. It's an honor to be here. We appreciate the recognition tonight. We're very grateful to represent our city in a way that we feel like that you all appreciate and that our city appreciates. I also teach at Great Oak High School, so knowing the culture and the environment we provide at Great Oak High School for students and for athletes, I'm honored to be here to know that we are an institution that represents the city well and provides positive and wonderful environments for students and for athletes. The seven young men and my assistant coach who are here tonight are fantastic examples of what you get when you provide hard work and heart and dedication, and you really believe in the concept of team above self, and you believe in the concept of together we can do more than we could ever do alone. And I believe that's the beauty of this team in particular, but the idea of athletics and cross-country in particular. So, thank you very much for having us here tonight.
Wonderful. Here's yours for the kid.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And Corey Osborne? You the assistant coach?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mark Cortez? There you go. Thank you, congratulations. I also ran cross-country in high school. Ramsey Cortez?
Right.
There you go. Congratulations. Austin Elkins?
Right.
All right. You guys are amazing. Nick Gaffney?
Right here.
All right. You done there? Thank you. And Jeffrey King?
Right here.
Congratulations. And Nathan? Yes? There you go, congratulations. And last but not least, Gabriel. Gabriel, congratulations. Now everybody turn around. Congratulations, guys. Congratulations. All right. And our second presentation will be a presentation of proclamation for National Human Trafficking Prevention Month to Riverside County Sheriff's Department. Captain Chris Durham, we're gonna ask you to come down maybe to the podium, or if you'd like to call your team down, certainly like you to do that, and I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Okay. All right, the city of Temecula proclamation, whereas across the nation, January is National Human Trafficking Prevention Month, which formally recognizes that human trafficking is a global crime that devastates lives, and whereas National Human Trafficking Prevention Month emphasizes the need for public and private sectors to come together to focus on prevention, partnerships, prosecution of traffickers, and support for survivors. And whereas National Human Trafficking Prevention Month is an annual reminder that millions of men, women, and children around the globe, including in the United States, are subject to modern-day slavery through the inhumane practice of human trafficking. And whereas the International Labor Organization estimates that there are more than 24.9 million human trafficking victims worldwide, including 16 million victims of labor exploitation, 4.8 million victims of sexual exploitation, and 4.1 million victims of forced labor. And whereas human trafficking is the second highest criminal enterprise in the United States, grossing billions every year, and whereas Riverside County Anti-Human Trafficking Task Force works with local and national resources, including the Riverside County Sheriff's Department and the FBI, and is committed to promoting awareness and prevention of human trafficking. And whereas victims and residents suspecting human trafficking may call the RCAHT hotline to obtain assistance 24 hours a day, and now therefore I, Mayor Zach Schwank, on behalf of the City Council of the city of Temecula hereby proclaim the month of January 2023 to be Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And I'm gonna go ahead and hand this proclamation to Councilmember Alexander, and she'll bring it down. Thank you. And if you'd like to go ahead and make a few comments, and I know Councilmember Alexander's bringing it down right now, but we'd certainly love to hear from you.
You guys wanna go first?
I would like to just say thank you to you guys. We always have and always will appreciate the support we receive from the city and from the citizens of this community. In the 26 years I've been a deputy sheriff, this has been the most challenging assignment I've had, so everybody that helps us is always greatly appreciated.
Anyone else? Okay.
All right, well, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you and your group. Many people don't talk about the slavery part to it, and I know that this position that you guys take is a calling, so I just wanna again thank you from all of us here in Temecula, the citizens, because I know you guys do work that is so worthy and hard and difficult. So thank you again, and I just pray that all you guys stay safe. Thank you again.
Thank you. 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 Our year today's stats for calls for service in 2022, and this is as the end of December, 78,160 comparative to 2021, just over 83,000. For the month of December in 2022 was 63,174 comparative to 6,500 calls for service the previous year. One thing I wanted to let Mr. Mayor, the council, and city staff know is the organization of a new team that serves the city of Temecula. It's called the Robbery Burglary Suppression Team, or RBST for short. It consists of a sergeant, two investigators, and two deputies with the sole mission to conduct the necessary follow-up on robberies, burglaries, and organized retail theft rings. In the month of December, they closed 18 cases via arrest and criminal filings with the district attorney's office, and as a case example, they identified an organized retail theft ring that was targeting several of your pharmacies, your standalone businesses, as well as pharmacies located in grocery stores. As a result of that, they're able to close several cases in the Temecula Valley and recover $20,000 worth of beauty supplies, over-the-counter medications, and personal hygiene items. Next slide, please. So as an example from that one case, three people are in custody, and there's some of the items that were recovered. And so you're aware, and the cities and the residents are aware, these suspects are not from the Temecula Valley. They're coming from our local communities, and we just want to send a clear message that it won't be tolerated. So we have this team specifically designed to do that work. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you. We appreciate you and appreciate all the team's hard work on stuff like this. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our public comment portion on non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, we do have some public comments on non-agendized items. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda, specifically non-agendized items, and each speaker is limited to three minutes. The balance of the rules are printed on the agenda. The first speaker is Adam Eventoff, to be followed by Payam Dineshwar.
Welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Adam Eventoff, Public Affairs Manager for SoCal Gas. I'm here to essentially prepare residents and staff for high bills in January. The commodity market for SoCal, for natural gas, is through the roof. It's because of a bad winter creating high demand, record demand in the United States. As a result, supply and demand is driving natural gas prices up. SoCal Gas provides the service of providing gas to your home at a basically fixed rate. However, the gas that goes in those pipes that go to your home can vary widely, and unfortunately, because of this nasty weather, because of the demand, it's sending things north. But there are things folks can do. First and foremost, go to socalgas.com and visit either assistance or higher gas bills, and there are some tricks and tips to try to reduce your bill. One of the things you can do to sort of mitigate the variability of these high bills is sign up for a level pay where you average out the cost of your gas bill over the year so that you're paying a little less in the winter, a little more in the summer, and it balances things out. Also, some things that old dad used to teach you, which is turn down the thermostat anywhere between three and five degrees, turn down the heat on your water heater a little bit, just weather stripping, caulking, all those things do add up, do make a difference. But when it's all said and done, people need to be prepared that the bills are gonna be a lot higher, and to at least try to get ahead of that while you can. There's still a few weeks left in January. Hopefully, the weather will mellow out, gas demand will drop, and so will gas bills. So, in the meantime, please be prepared, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Payam Dineshwar, to be followed by the last speaker, Dario Bianchi.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Hi, I just wanted to say on TemeculaCA.gov, it says that the City Council is a five-member, nonpartisan board elected to act as the elected body of city government. In the constitutional republic, we select representatives to select the will of the people on our government. Yet Temecula selects the mayor ceremonially via the five members picking. What's the ceremony?
Could you scooch to the mic a little bit, or pull it? There you go.
Yes, so Temecula selects the mayor ceremonially via five people. What's the ceremony? Sounds like a tribal or ritual, like the Bohemian Grove, as it's a secret of what really happens, and we don't know the backroom deals. 2023 estimation population of Temecula is roughly 113,000. 2020 midterm elections sent the famous mail-in ballots per address depending on the district one resides in. I live in District 4, I had no say. The government electing itself is very dangerous. It's a prelude to dictatorship and tyranny. I don't know the new members, yet I definitely don't support Bill Gates as an ultra-left-wing mayor. Districts 2 and 4's city council members were not up for reelections. Two out of five, 40%, hypothetically, were 45,000 citizens who are qualified to vote legally, had no say in who the new members or the mayor is. This is more hypocrisy than the known election and voter frauds of 2020 and 2022. PeterNavar.com has the receipts. The entire city should vote for a primary and a general election instead of five people who rotate positions and accountability is not held. Therefore, this city council, with no offense, is illegitimate, and all of the items discussed here, none of it matters. The left caters mostly to the globalist Great Reset agenda carried out by the establishment and the technocratic elite. Smart City 2030 is very dangerous as clusters of 5G towers and LED incapacitators can cause intercranial pressures, and these streetlights can kill in smart cities, and we have seven years to move. I completely blame the city council for carrying out this operation and not resisting Sacramento, not resisting Gavin Newsom. We will get more public drag queen story hours and more sanctuary studies for illegal immigrants, and more waste of taxpayer money. Again, this city council is illegitimate, and all items discussed today lose their meaning. And the only person I respect here is Jessica Alexander, because she's a great person and she's a patriot, but I don't, I'm just saying, yeah, 40% had no say in this last election, and I'll discuss the smart city agenda.
Thank you very much, your time's up. Next speaker?
Thank you, very much. Thanks.
And the last speaker on public comments on agenda is Dario Bianchi.
Hey, welcome.
Good evening, City Council. Well, I hope that the new year will bring water, okay? Besides the rain I'm talking about. So I'm here for the water problem that I speak last time, last year. I don't know at this point what we're gonna do, but myself, if I'm a, you know, I would be a volunteer to set up a program or a project, not only with the city, but the entire county, okay? We got to have a program at this point, because no water, no city, nothing, nada, zero, okay? So we need basically to team up with the other towns, put pressure on the county board supervisor, team up with the other Southern California county, forget about Los Angeles, they are not interested, they think they got water, and then basically put a pressure, big pressure, on Sacramento, because there is nothing to do unless we do this kind of program, okay? If you guys think that it's raining and we can have a lot of water, good luck to you, good luck to us. Why? Because there is no water. Do you understand where the water come from? Do you ever seen Lake Med, Las Vegas? Do you see what's happened? Or you guys have, sorry, not you individually, but you guys as a city council have the head on the sand, because this is a major problem. This is not minor. This is number one in the agenda if you want to do your job. So basically, we need water, and we need to wake up and start to do something. I may be wrong, but beside not wrong, because I studied what's happened, and I'm totally alarmed, we need to do something. And if you need me, I'm here. Whatever program, I did business all my life globally, so I understand business, how to organize and everything, okay? So I hope that the new year will bring water to everybody. So everybody will be happy, is a nonpartisan issue, I guess. Because without water, you can discuss anything you want, not gonna work. And now this year, we have basically more construction, more people coming in, and where we gonna get the water? We already have a problem where we are. So, you know, I mean, everybody of you has the responsibility to do a program.
Your time's up, Dario. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more public comments this evening? Okay, great, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to city council reports. Does any council members have anything to report out tonight? All right, fair enough. We'll move on to our consent calendar. Do we have any public comments on consent?
We actually do, Mr. Mayor. We have two public comments on consent calendar item number nine, and if you would like to go ahead and take those now, we can go ahead and do that.
Let's do those public comments right now, please.
Okay, so with respect to consent calendar, a total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear on the consent calendar. Again, each speaker is limited to three minutes. I have one in-person comment, and then we'll still have time, so I'll read the email comment. The balance of the rules are reflected in the agenda. The in-person comment is Laurel Lamont.
Welcome.
Hi. All right, so I've been doing this since 2017. I'm a little tired today. SB 9 needs no extension, postponement, or delay. We're in a housing crisis, and I desperately need us to start acting like it. We need housing. We didn't design Temecula around the workforce. We designed it around its accessibility, but not the need for the housing of its workforce. I understand your staff and the powers that be are not directly impacted by this need, but that furthers the need for the representation of those who are. We need this. We need housing, and we need to start acting like we need it, because we need it. I'm here, and I've been fighting for it for so many people, so many people who don't show up to these things, but need it. I want to know where the accountability is, because RDA funding was lost because it wasn't utilized in a manner in which innovated housing innovations and made better than what we have existing of affordable housing now. What we did is we, as Temecula specifically, built was affordable housing, and I've only dug into one building that just basically allowed private developers to profit at the expense of those who need the affordable housing. In my building alone, and you all know this, that the tenants were literally charged illegally for fees that, due to statute of limitations and the fact that it wasn't brought to public's awareness or your awareness until I lived there and dug, did my own homework on it, those fees were only reimbursed up to three years and still no transparency on if everybody got the reimbursement. Certainly, that building's been there 10 years, lots of fees. What are we doing outside of blaming the state for its need to control locally? What has Temecula done without state's regulation that is in the benefit of the workforce and its need for housing? Please, please, just do the right thing. Let's find housing solutions and not put up any more barriers. Please, please, just do the right thing. Let's find housing solutions and not put up any more barriers. If every pre-planned community had 20% of innovative, not traditional project housing, not affordable rental housing, but innovative habitat, what if every pre-planned community in Temecula, every cute little community with a pool and schools and shopping accessibility had 20% affordable housing? I know my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Mayor, that was the only in-person comment for number nine. We have one emailed comment from Martha Howard. Item number nine should be a vote to approve a plan to implement SB nine California Home Act instead of being submitted to vote for an extension of the interim urgency ordinance. After a year and plus delaying public hearings only exacerbate the already affordable, unaffordable housing crisis in our region. To have access to affordable housing is a human right and enhances quality of life. There is no reason to create a systematic legislative delay to avoid SB nine compliance nor to waste financial means and consultants. Temecula's planning commission knows that many cities have already adopted an ordinance allowing building of a second unit on a single-family home lot. For instance, take a look at the plan that the city of Moraga introduced for the purpose to implement SB nine. My request to the new council is to demonstrate efficiency and compel the planning commission to produce a plan within 90 days. Please refrain from further postponements and pass an ordinance. Mr. Mayor, those are the only comments on SB nine. There are no public comments for any other consent item.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll go ahead and move to consent. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Item number two, approve action minutes of December 13th, 2022. Item three, approve list of demands. Item four, adopt ordinance 2022-14 approving Second Amendment to the Development Agreement by and between the City of Temecula and Lennar Homes, Inc., a California corporation, and Winchester Hills One LLC, a California limited liability company. Planning application number PA 21-0128. This is a second reading. Item number five is receive and file citywide year-end report highlighting 2022 accomplishments. Item number six, approve annual boards and commission handbook for calendar year 2023. Item number seven, approve annual citywide records retention schedule and records destruction for calendar year 2023. Item number eight, approve agreement for Community Wildlife Protection Program LR 21-1331. Item nine, issue public report pursuant to Government Code Section 65858D regarding interim urgency ordinance number 2022-03 establishing regulations related to urban lot splits and housing units built in accordance with Senate Bill nine. Item number 10 is award a construction contract to Flatiron West, Inc. for the I-15 French Valley Parkway Improvements Phase Two, PW 16-01. And item 11 is accept improvements and file notice of completion for library parking Phase Two, PW 13-09. Go ahead and entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
It looks like we have a motion and a second. And we'll go ahead and vote from the screen.
So I am seeing that the screen does not reflect current council members, so I'm going to go ahead and just call a roll call vote and that will probably be what we need to be, do for the rest of the balance of the meeting. Councilmember Alexander?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Schwank?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalfis?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll turn it over to President Stewart for the Temecula Community Services District Meeting.
So I will begin the Temecula Community Services District Meeting. Madam Secretary, please note we're all still here. Public comments, do we have any? Okay, so consent calendar is item number 12, approve action minutes of December 13th, 2022.
Move approval.
Motion.
Second. Yeah, okay, it's been moved to second, please. Wait for the secretary.
I have a council member, a motion from Mayor Schwank, second from Councilmember Alexander. Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Schwank?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Aye.
And Councilmember Kalfis?
Aye.
All right, that passes 5-0. So we will go to the Director of Community Services report.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We just have one item for everyone's attention today. We'd like to announce the unveiling of our most recent student mural this Wednesday, January 11th at 5:00 PM over at Sam Hicks Monument Park. This student mural was installed in early January and it will be on display through the month of February in celebration of Frederick Douglass's birthday and for Black History Month in February. The mural is in Sam Hicks Monument Park on the east side of the restroom snack bar building at 28300 Mercedes Street. Staff will be on site to welcome guests and at this informal unveiling, young artist Maya Hill and her family members will be present for photo opportunities. So if you're not familiar with this program, we have a rotating student mural. It's painted on canvas and it's installed in a frame on the side of a building. So it allows us to rotate out that, that public art. It's a lot of fun, different student groups participate each month and it's really a great way for us to display student art and also increase just an opportunity for public art within the city. So, thank you for that.
Right, and I don't, I wasn't here for the grape drop, but Mayor, Zach, you were here. How, how did it come out?
We had to cancel it.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so it was extremely windy and rainy. Staff was having a difficult time controlling the grapes coming down, which was very frustrating. So the nine o'clock was more of a light show, but it was celebrated nonetheless. There was quite a, quite a crowd, even though it was raining.
Yeah.
So that was great. And then unfortunately, power outages, more rain, and hoping for better weather next year.
Yeah.
Thanks for asking about that. And we would like to also thank the Public Works Department because they were out there in the rain trying everything they could to get us to be able to drop the grapes and then light up the building. And for nine o'clock, we pulled it off, but for, for midnight, we had to cancel it unfortunately.
Yeah, and actually had a family who came to skate at the skating rink here, which was, was crowded. They still said they had a great time. And so then they decided they had so much fun, they went to Pelzer's and they skated out there. But they had more fun at this skating rink, so they came back over here to skate again at the Temecula skating rink. So, you know, it, it does get a lot of use, it's very appreciated. So that, that was a nice touch every year for the last 10.
Well, we love to hear that. Thank you.
Yeah, so, General Manager.
Mr. President, I just wanted to thank Community Service Department staff. They pulled off another great holiday with all the events from New Year's, but also leading up to Christmas and, and everything else that went on in whole town, including the parade. So just appreciate them and appreciate the coordination with all operating departments and it was a, it was a great year.
Thank you so much.
Any directors' reports?
No.
All right, so I will adjourn the meeting till the next one.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to call the successor agency to the Temecula redevelopment, redevelopment agency to order. Madam City Clerk, please note that we are all still present. Do we have any public comments for non-agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, we do not, and I believe your roll call is ready as well.
Okay. All right, so we have one item on our consent calendar. All matters listed under consent are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. Item number 13, approve action minutes of December 13th, 2022. I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, let's see if this works. All right, and that passes 5-0. Thank you, everyone. Executive Directors' report?
Nothing further than that.
Okay, Board of Directors, anything tonight? Okay, hearing nothing, we're going to adjourn Sarda. All right, we will go ahead and reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting and move to our business portion of this, of the agenda. Item number 14 is approve the public recognition policy and annual proclamation list. We go ahead and have a staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I will go ahead and ask for the slideshow to be put up. Excellent, thank you. Well, councilmembers, here we are again. We've been here a few times and we are back again tonight before you. We did have direction previously to go ahead and put this on the consent calendar. However, we deemed it appropriate to go ahead and put this on business in light of the two new council members joining us. And so we'll go ahead and do a little bit of a history recap before we get into the final request for the adoption of the policy, the annual proclamation list, and any other direction you would like to give us. Next slide, please. So with respect to a little history here, this actually started in November 2021 with Councilmember Stewart requesting an item being placed on a future agenda to consider the creation of a memorial and monument policy. We're actually referring to that policy now officially as the public recognitions policy. In December, the council approved the creation of the ad hoc subcommittee, which was Councilmember Alexander and Councilmember Stewart to go ahead and work with staff on that creation of the policy. And that was a unanimous 5-0 city council decision. Next slide, please. In February of 2022, the subcommittee met with staff to review existing resolutions, ordinances, policies, and procedures for public recognitions. They also asked staff to go ahead and conduct some research in regards to what other cities' policies in this space look like. In March 2022, the subcommittee met with staff to go ahead and review the additional research from the other cities and make its final recommendations to the council. In May 22, May 2022, the city council considered the subcommittee's recommendations for the public recognitions and they provided staff general direction to go ahead and draft that policy based on city council direction. That city council's decision was also unanimous, 5-0. Next slide, please. In June, prior to the final policy being approved, the city council actually directed that the subcommittee also review the inclusionary proclamations, including the pride proclamation, to determine options for presentation and signature based on individual council member preferences. We met with the, staff met with the subcommittee on July 2022 to go ahead and review this additional assignment and were able to reach consensus on some items, but not all. The subcommittee directed staff to bring the unresolved items back to subcommittee in November 2022. Next slide. Then in October 2022, the city council gave the subcommittee another assignment to go ahead and take a look at resolutions of principle. So in November 2022, the subcommittee also met to discuss the outstanding items related to the inclusionary proclamations and then also the new assignment with respect to resolutions of principle. And we're again able to reach consensus on most items, but not all. At the December 13th, 2022 meeting, the city council provided final direction on the policy and directed staff to go ahead and prepare the policy for adoption on the consent calendar at a future meeting. That city council decision was four to one. Again, we stated earlier why we're going ahead and putting this on the business versus the consent calendar. Next slide, please. So the city council approved policy has nine different sections in it. It actually has the, the section that references the creation of a public recognitions ad hoc subcommittee. It references a section on standard certificates of recognition, proclamations, pins and medals, a community leader award of distinction, a council member award of recognition when they retire, the wall of honor, and a memorial, monument, and/or facility naming section. And then they had a couple of pieces of direction that kind of fell into a miscellaneous section, so we'll review those in just a minute. Next slide. With respect to the public recognitions ad hoc subcommittee, the subcommittee is going to be appointed annually as a part of the city council's subcommittee review and selection process, which the city council will be reviewing later in the agenda today. The subcommittee, to the extent possible, should consist of both short and long-tenured members. The subcommittee will consider all public recognitions that include a nomination component. That means pretty much the community leader award of distinction, council member award of recognition, wall of honor, and memorial and monument facility naming. Those are the public recognitions that the subcommittee will consider based on the nominations. The nominations will all be considered in a calendar year and the subcommittee will function similarly to other ad hoc subcommittees that consider items on a calendar year basis. Next slide. I will not review all of these. However, these are our standard certificates of recognition. They are provided at the request of residents or community leaders, businesses. They are presented on behalf of the city of Temecula. They will, the change here is that they will now be signed by a single signature in the following order. Council member attending the related event, the mayor, the mayor pro tem, or council member designated by the mayor. Again, this is the direction already received and voted upon by the city council and the eight certificates are listed below. Next slide, please. With respect to proclamations, the city council gave us direction to go ahead and include all of the proclamations provided at the request of residents, businesses, nonprofit organizations, or council members. Unless three or more council members pull a proclamation from the annual list indicating exclusion of that proclamation for that year, all proclamations on the annual list are issued for presentation via mail or in person as requested. This is really important to know, even though that list might seem a little extensive, all those proclamations are not issued annually every single year. If, if someone requests that that presentation be mailed to them because they're having a particular event or presented at a council meeting, it is followed up on, so. And then with respect to proclamations, the city council already gave direction to also indicate that it will be presented on behalf of the city of Temecula. This is a change. Prior to that, it was presented on behalf of the city council of the city of Temecula. And so it'll be presented on behalf of the city of Temecula and it will be signed again by a single signature in the following order. Mayor, mayor pro tem, or council member designated by the mayor. Next slide, please. With respect to pins and medals, we will be same thing. They are provided at the request of residents or nonprofit organizations. They are accompanied by a certificate and presented via mail or in person as requested. So Girl Scouts is a great example. We'll get contacted by the Girl Scouts. They'll say, we want, we have a Silver Scout, we'd like you to present a Girl Scout pin at a council meeting, or we're having a particular event. We'll go ahead and respond as requested. They will be presented on behalf of the city of Temecula, again, providing consistency across all of our recognitions, signed by a single signatory in the following order. Mayor, mayor pro tem, council member designated by the mayor. And again, the new hero's medal and pin is also included in this. Next slide, please. Community leader award of distinction. The city council created a new community leader award of distinction and also created some criteria. I won't go through the, all of the criteria, but you can see there that there is a nomination component, there's a contribution component. The subcommittee will be considering this particular award and then the public recognition will happen at an in-person city council meeting. Next slide, please. The city council also gave direction to go ahead and do the council member award of recognition upon retirement. Again, this will be reviewed by the subcommittee. There's an internal form process and it's based on years of service and there is a public recognition component to it, the criteria the council already previously approved. Next slide, please. Wall of honor. The city has had a wall of honor for some time. It was actually a separate recognition. It has been folded up into the public recognitions component under all public recognitions and also has a nomination component to it and will be considered by the subcommittee. Next slide. Same thing is true of memorial and monument and facility naming. Councilmember Stewart, this is where it all began a year ago. So we now have a process, a nomination process, where we can go ahead and review memorial, monument, and facility naming. There's the nomination form, there's a heavy contribution section, there's a time limit or period of time that may be waived by the subcommittee and the city council, but we're really looking at long-term, 20-year period of contribution. And again, there's a public recognition component. Next slide, please. And then lastly, the city council did provide direction to go ahead and any of the non-standard recognitions, meaning the community leader award of distinction, the wall of honor, the memorial, monument, or facility naming, those similarly to the city of Marietta shall not have a political, religious, lifestyle, and/or commercial association with them. And then the city council also gave direction with respect to resolutions of principle, defined as statements in which an organization describes its collective beliefs, values, and intentions. This is separate from a personal resolution of principle. We're only speaking of an organizational resolution of principle, will not be issued by the council and therefore are not included as a part of this recognitions policy. Next slide, please. So city council members, that is a quick recap of where we have been several times and tonight we are asking you to go ahead and receive any public comments. We actually have several public comments, have some discussion, provide us with some direction, and then go ahead and approve, as you deem appropriate, the public recognitions policy and the annual proclamations list. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. And I think what we'll do is we'll take the public comments and then we can go into questions, comments of, of the council. So Madam City Clerk, would you please call the first speaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, these are, this is actually a business item and therefore each speaker is limited to five minutes. We do have some email comments as well, so we will go ahead and take the in-person comments first. The first speaker is Jennifer Reeves, to be followed by Sandra Cox.
Members of the council, I appreciate the time to speak today. I am here to speak in support of keeping the list of monthly proclamations as it stands. It is unfortunate that one member of the dais continues to use her It is unfortunate that one member of the dais continues to use her nonpartisan position on the council to push her religious agenda. While I understand she was voted in by a certain group of people, that does not change the fact that she is in a position where she is supposed to represent all of her constituents, not just the ones who have the same political and religious beliefs. As we have seen today right here in this room with our invocation being given by a member of the Islamic Center of Temecula Valley, your constituents are not a monolith of Christian believers. We live in a democracy, not a theocracy. Now, I'm no biblical scholar, but I have been around the Bible in my life, and I know that you base your bigotry against the LGBTQIA community on one verse of the Old Testament that is grossly misinterpreted. But while you use that one, let's not forget these verses from the New Testament. Romans, chapter seven, verses two and three. If a man and a woman are divorced, and she has relations with another man, she is an adulteress. Luke, chapter 16, verse 18. Anyone who divorces his wife and marries another woman is committing adultery, and the man who marries a divorced woman is also committing adultery. And Matthew, chapter five, verses 31 and 32. Anyone who divorces his wife makes her the victim of adultery, and anyone who marries a divorced woman also commits adultery. No one is saying you have to go against your religious beliefs when you can simply recuse yourself from a topic of the proclamations you feel you cannot support. But many of us do not agree with your lifestyle and would appreciate not having it shoved on us. So while you sit there on the dais and inappropriately preach about your religious beliefs, you reveal not only your bigotry but your hypocrisy, and this community will not stand by and watch you push it from your seat on the council. To the rest of the council, please consider all of your constituents when you make your decision, and choose to keep the proclamation list as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Sandra Cox, to be followed by Mick Sobczak.
Sandra Cox.
Members of the city council and community members, thank you very much for the privilege of speaking to you tonight. As a concerned citizen, mother, and board-certified psychiatrist who's been in practice for 26 years, I am here to ask you to please keep Pride Month as a part of our proclamations list in this city. Our LGBTQIA community members deserve recognition, just as do our community members of the myriad other groups on the proclamations list. As a mental health provider, I am made acutely aware every day of the mental health struggles of the LGBTQIA population, and that's not because they are inherently prone to mental health issues. It's because they are the targets of stigma and bullying in the communities that they live. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death amongst people ages 10 to 24, and the LGBTQIA youth are four times more likely to commit suicide than their cis hetero peers. The primary contributing risk factors for this are: number one, parental rejection; number two, bullying in their communities; number three, a lack of affirming spaces, a lack of affirming spaces at home, schools, and the community at large. This proposal to strike Pride Month from Temecula's proclamations list communicates rejection of our LGBTQIA population, and it sets a tone that encourages exclusion, discrimination, bullying, and harassment. Actions such as this give legitimacy and power to those who would do actual harm to our LGBTQIA community, and we have seen this played out in places like the Pulse nightclub in Orlando, Florida, and the Club Q in Colorado Springs. I could give you a dissertation on genetics and neurobiology that support that sexual orientation and gender identification are not choices but biological realities, but I know it would be lost on ears that have been deafened by religious ideology, an ideology you proclaim but is in contrast to Christ's teachings. Suffice it to say that if you do this to our community, you will not only create an environment that puts our LGBTQIA community members at risk for an increased risk of depression and suicidal ideation, but you put them at risk for actual violence against them, and that blood will be on your hands. Let Pride Month remain on the proclamations list, and let us show the world that our city is inclusive and welcoming to all human beings, regardless of their race, gender identity, sexual orientation, or religious beliefs. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Mick Sobczak, to be followed by Jennifer Crum.
Welcome.
Long time no see. Congratulations to the two new members. So yeah, my name's Mick Sobczak, and I'm standing in opposition to the Pride Month, not because of the gay aspect of it. Now, I have a lot of friends, I have family members that are gay. They're productive members of society, they just want to go about their day, come home to their loved ones, and live their life. What they do in their bedroom is what they do in their bedroom. What I do in my bedroom is what I do in my bedroom. That's the way it should be left. But I hear about, you know, Christians being attacked and use Bible verses against them. We're not allowed to be a Christian, but then we use a Bible verse against them, you know, saying that they are a Christian, or we want to be all-inclusive. So if you're going to give us June for Pride Month, how about giving us July for straight Pride Month? How's that? How about that? That's inclusivity, because the one speaker before me said, "Think about all your constituents." So as a straight male, if they disagree with what I say, I'm going to call them heterophobic, you know? And my attack with this, and I am going to say it's an attack, is against the trans side of it. I was taught in school that you had X chromosome, X, X, Y, no more, no less. If you had a different mixture of chromosomes, it was anomaly, and you were naturally sterile. Now, you know, call me old-fashioned, but I prefer my women without a penis. That's just the way it is, you know? Don't laugh. And you guys just need to understand that you lost two council members because you want to go woke. But what you don't understand is the residents of Temecula aren't woke. We're awake. We've seen what we're doing, you're doing. Mary Ann was sitting here for, what, 18 years? She just needed one more term to get her tenure, but she's gone. Mary Ann and Matt get to sit on this side and see what it feels like when you guys take actions against us. And I know, Mayor Pro Tem, you were attacked for your opinions on this. So be inclusive. Go ahead, keep your June Pride Month, but give us July straight Pride Month. That's all I ask of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Jennifer Crum. Jennifer? And then after Jennifer is Ronald Larson.
Welcome.
You just made me think of something. Okay, sorry about that. Councilmembers, thank you for your time. I stand before you today to request that the city continue to support its whole community, which includes the LGBTQIA-plus persons, and continue with its yearly Pride Month. We, as a community, need to support LGBTQIA-plus members and help normalize their lives. They have been ostracized, beaten, and abandoned, and for what? Because of who they love or don't love? Whether some choose to see it, we have a wonderful community of LGBTQIA-plus persons that deserve to live in a town that has their hearts open. We, we have love in our hearts. I teach my kids that you don't have to be friends with everyone, but you must be kind. I'm here to ask you to not be fearful and to be kind to those you may not understand, as it's been said, "We only fear things we don't understand." We've spoken quite a bit of children, about children in this room recently. By allowing our children to see their LGBTQ parents treated as equals will only help these children grow to be confident adults. The more our neighbors and community treat the LGBTQ children as equals, the more it will help ease, it will help these children to grow up to be confident adults. Let's help guide these children instead of treating them like soldiers of who should only do, think, act as they are told. When parents don't have the love in their hearts to support their LGBTQ children, they will not grow up to be confident adults that are productive members in our society. I found a quote that I love and I want to share with you today that says, "Nothing in life is to be feared, it is only to be understood. Now it is our time to understand more so that we fear less." I am asking you, again, to not fear the LGBTQIA-plus community and instead help them celebrate their historical triumphs. Straight people don't need a month, as we've had no hurdles. I want to wrap up by saying if any of the council members are unable to separate their personal beliefs from their civic duties, they should resign. I have copies of the oath that state that you have sworn and affirmed that you will support and defend the Constitution, while the Constitution says it's okay to be gay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Ronald Larson. Ronald Larson, to be followed by Julie Gary.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Swank, city council, city staff. My name is Ron Larson. I'm a U.S. Air Force veteran, having served our country in the Far East and Europe during the Vietnam War. I had the good fortune to serve with men and women of color, religious orientation, and socioeconomic status. My wife and I have lived in Temecula for the last 21 years. We moved here because we found this town to be welcoming, supportive, and balanced in their approach to a life in our valley. During last month's council meeting, an objection was brought to the floor to remove support of the June Pride Month. I hope opposition to this existing Pride Month proclamation is not considered under any circumstances by this council. It is being driven nothing more than by hypocrisy and bigotry. When we marginalize one person... Pardon me? We marginalize everyone. Please look deep into your hearts and your minds and consider how you vote on these issues. Mahatma Gandhi said, "Be the change you wish to see in the world." Thank you. Thank you.
The next speaker is Julie Gary, to be followed by Bob Cow.
Good evening, city council. As we gather today, I'd like to address Agenda Item 14. At the last meeting and over the course of many months and years now, City Council Alexander began working on attempts to eliminate the Pride Month from the proclamations or to move all proclamations away from council chambers. She cited her religious beliefs as a reason for these demands. As many of you know, Pride Month is an important time for the LGBTQI-plus community and our city as a whole. It is a time for celebration, reflection, and most importantly, recognition. This community is an integral part of Temecula and our society, and is imperative that we continue to recognize and celebrate their contributions to our city, as business owners, as our neighbors, as the people that we live and work with every day. However, Councilmember Alexander's opposition to Pride Month is deeply concerning. She supported the proclamation in her first year, but this past year she opposed it. She did not attend the meeting, and she rallied supporters to speak against it. Some of them accosted children, hurt them, made them cry. Her religious freedom is important, but it should not be used to violate the civil liberties of others. Her actions are in violation to her oath to the Constitution. Discriminating against LGBTQ-plus people will have economic consequences to our city, and that will affect our local businesses and our economy. We want to be a place where everyone feels welcome and wants to come shop, eat, and play. Please do not put discriminatory policies into our city council chambers. As a city council, it is your responsibility to ensure that all members of our community are treated with fairness and respect. We have a long history of celebrating our diverse communities in Temecula, and it is crucial that we continue to do so. Councilmember Alexander's misuse of her seat for her personal religious objectives is a blatant abuse of power and must be stopped. Her religious liberties end when they start to infringe upon the constitutional rights of others. In closing, I urge you to support the continuation of Pride Month in our city's most visible and prestigious venue, the city council chambers. Let us continue to celebrate the diversity of our community and reject any attempts to discriminate against any protected group of people. I will also say that as someone with a degree in cellular molecular biology, I wish gender and sexuality was as easy as X and Y chromosomes, but it's absolutely not. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bob Cow, to be followed by Joy G. So Bob Cow, to be followed by Joy G. Yeah, Bob Cow, to be followed by Joy G.
Welcome.
Hello, council. Hey, this is the United States of America, and we have the freedom to do anything that doesn't inflict harm on other people. So I don't disagree with, if you're homosexual and you are doing your thing, I have no problem with that. However, making a month a Pride Month, I'm against that. And the reason for that, and by the way, just because we're against Pride Month would not be saying that we're biased or hate gays. I just want to tell you that, that we actually, in many cases, we love gays because we want to help them. When they say pride, pride is one of the seven deadly sins. When I'm a Christian, I don't, I'm not proud to be a Christian, I'm humbled that God gave me that, that gift of Christianity. Other people can say, yes, they're proud. Yes, I'm proud that maybe I won an award, Cross Country Award. When I was in school, yes, I'm proud that I've won some awards and did this and that. I was an engineer, but God gave me the gifts and talents to do that. So I have to be humbled in some ways that I am not a perfect person. None of us are. We're not saying that you're perfect if, if you... It seemed like one person here seemed to say that I have Bible verses that, yes, yes, we follow the sin. We will be sinful people, always, but always try, always ask God to help you through those sinful times that in your life will never be whole in this world. You know, in America, we have the ability, we have the ability to allow and let live because of our American exceptionalism. I think in June, maybe we should make, instead of Pride Month, American Exceptionalism Month. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Joy G., to be followed by Jessica Christopher.
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Joy, although my heart hurts and I don't feel very joyful. Abolishing June Pride Month proclamation is hurtful, the idea. Pride can be defined as a feeling of deep pleasure or satisfaction derived from one's own achievements, the achievements of those with whom one is closely associated, or from qualities or possessions that are widely admired. Celebrating a victory also defined as consciousness of one's own dignity, honor, self-respect, self-worth, self-identity. How I identify is worthy of celebrating. How my friends and neighbors in the LGBTQI-plus community worthy of celebrating. When straight pride is celebrated everywhere, every day, always, one month out of the year, although every day I identify as a child of the Most High Love, I identify as a colorful thread in the tapestry of life. thread in the tapestry of life in this particular realm. Who are you? A child of love? A child of light? A child of peace? All deserve to be embraced and welcomed, included? I happen to be a member of this community known as LGBTQI-plus, but I'm a child of divine love too. And when I first came out, Pride Festival was the first safe space after I had been rejected and demonized and accused and abused. Pride Festival was a safe space. A safe space when I and people continue to be told to shrink and hide. So during Pride, we celebrate who we are as a community, a community of those who continue to be rebuked, abused, demonized, persecuted, ostracized, and outcast. I want you to know, I'm exhausted, tired of the ongoing lies about some scary agenda that you continue to perpetuate, when the only agenda is, has been, and will be, love and equality. That's the agenda. To be free, to love, to be honored for the love that we rise up to accept within ourselves. How I long to be accepted for this who part of me, instead of what's equated with homosexuality. My freedom song, you don't want me to ring, but I'm humming and singing anyway. And here's the thing, why, why, when I live led by love, am I slapped in the face by your dirty glove? If you won't accept me, then let me be, or let your eyes be opened to the who in me. Please just love. It's really what Jesus would do.
Joy, thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jessica Christopher, to be followed by Derek Kinnison.
Hey, welcome. That was just too funny. I don't know how I sat up there with a straight face. I'm sorry. Mayor and city council members, I'm gonna switch it up. I got complained about two things on the agenda there. So Juneteenth, I mean, come on, my Scottish ancestors were enslaved, and I'm not real in with the Juneteenth kind of date there. Anyway, that's just a side note. It was all I could do to keep a straight face. Lordy, you guys are just too good. What does placing Gay Pride Month and declaring Pride Month do for the city? The nation has declared Gay Pride Month. The state declares Gay Pride Month. What does the city gain from declaring it? Does it make us all feel accepting? Does it give the city a warm, fuzzy feeling inside? Do we get a woke badge for courage? Declaring Gay Pride Month is a waste of time, energy, and money, and is causing division, but entertainment, clearly. When does this end? When we have all half-naked men dancing down Main Street? Is that what you want your children to see? Temecula has always been family-friendly. Let's keep it that way. Pride Month already exists. Great, let those who want to celebrate it do so. If you are going to have an LGBTQ-plus month, then I too want a heterosexual month. I mean, after all, you needed us to create them. Seriously, this has no place in the city government. People don't care what you do behind your walls, as long as you're consenting adults. Heterosexuals, at least we, keep the economy going by producing more workers and consumers. So, and the only other side note is, by the way, did you know that we are a representative republic? And that's why you pledge allegiance to a republic, not a democracy.
The next speaker is Derek Kinnison. Derek, 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 you are next up.
Can I bring that up a bit? All right. So, yeah, I grew up out here, grew out here back in the Rancho California days. I remember attending the town play when it became Temecula. Lot of, lot of history out here, grandparents, everything like that. So, yeah, I just want to welcome, welcome the new council members and returning ones. Yeah, Temecula, Rancho California, it's, unfortunately, you guys have a hard job to do because it's become just a huge, huge tug-of-war. It's a tug-of-war between constitutional republic and Marxist incrementalization that's going on. And I don't envy you guys for having to make the decisions on that. But I did want to just remind you guys all of your oaths that you did swear to the U.S. Constitution, the state constitution. Just reflect on those, focus on those. Our founding in this country was founded on Judeo-Christian values, whether people liked it or not. It wasn't founded on Muslim values, or Buddhists, or Hindu, anything like that. That's what this country was founded on. That's what this country is about. We have our Constitution. So anybody that isn't abiding by that, I'd just like them to admit that they're seceding from our Constitution. So if they want to try to pull all this Marxist stuff, just out in the open, have some pride with it, and just admit you're seceding from the Constitution. Don't try to hide behind it, saying that there's some sort of rights and stuff that doesn't exist. I've heard plenty of that tonight. Oh, my rights, my rights. Well, rights are unalienable rights that were given by God, not by man. So as far as, as far as like Bible scripture goes, I'm not here to throw a bunch of scripture around and anything like that. And I am, I'm very glad that Temecula unity is reading the Bible, at least, so I'm happy for that. I just want to say one thing. Matthew 5:11, "Blessed are you when people insult you, persecute you, and falsely say all kinds of evil against you, in my name, and that might be in Christ." So when you guys try to weaponize scripture and just slander Councilwoman Alexander for her Judeo-Christian beliefs, you guys are actually just blessing her. So keep it up. I'm sure she really, really loves blessings. So as far as, as far as the whole, the whole Pride, Pride Month issue, I mean, as a brother, as a loving brother of a transgender, I, I get, and I've done so much of the research, and my heart goes out to my sister. My biggest fear is for the high suicide rate, so I get that. I truly do. And I do have a heart. I do, I do love everybody. I do not condemn anything. I do condemn violence and bullying, things like that, but I really just, I don't get the picture on how if you guys take away Temecula Pride Month, it's gonna save somebody's life, or just make major, major changes in that community. That's, that's the part that no one has brought any proof to, to me. My biggest issue is that now here in Temecula, we're hosting adult entertainment. So we have drag shows. So, okay, well, maybe that's not all ages. Haven't, haven't been able to get the research on whether they do let kids in or not, but that's adult entertainment. That's, that's people half naked running around. That, that's just gonna be a leeway. So, okay, we're gonna have drag time story hours, so now you have men in their underwear having kids sit on their laps, read to them. I mean, this is just paving the way. It's paving the way for bestiality, for minor attracted persons, pedophiles. So at some point, I mean, where's, where's the line? When, when kids are getting harmed, or people are raping animals? I mean, somewhere, somebody has to have a line. So we just need to figure out where that line is. Where's the line stop? Because just incrementalization, like I said, Marxist incrementalization.
Your time's up.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we actually, we have several email comments that, because we're under the business portion of the agenda, I'll go ahead and read these as quickly as possible. We have about nine of them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So the first one is from Tiffany Si. "I would like to congratulate Councilmember Brown and Calphus, two of our newest members on the city council. My husband and I have been residing in Temecula since 1999 and have started to be concerned about the direction of our city over the last four or five years. Some of our council members have started embracing woke culture and turning our once-nice family community into the places that residents, that places residents into groups. As an immigrant myself, I find this offensive. We are all Americans, period. I am glad to see Councilmember Edwards and Ron gone. I agree with Councilmember Jessica Alexander that all opinions should be respected, not just what is popular with the woke crowd. My husband and I voted for Councilmember Alexander because we believe our city needs someone to fight and push back against the state's lack of common sense policy. So far, she has not disappointed us. Keep up the good work. The new city council for 2023 should focus on the important quality of life policy for the city of Temecula and not on the nonsense woke agenda. At least the top 10 safest cities in the United States. Keep Temecula beautiful and clean by holding the large chain stores like Target and Walmart responsible for keeping their parking lots clean of trash and debris, and pick up their shopping carts around the city. Have no tolerance for homeless individuals in our community. They seem to all come out at night. Mayor Zach Schwenk, if this sounds heartless to you, then offer your personal home and have your family take care of them. Lower city taxes. Mary Ann Edwards, including city manager Erin Adams, pushed for the tax increase in our city few years back. Shameful. Work on the traffic issue. Enough of the traffic lights on every corner and road diet. I see bike lanes everywhere, but hardly anyone riding bikes, except for the homeless people." The next speaker is Lana Salier. "Once again, City Councilmember Jessica Alexander is taking up precious Temecula City Council time to be a mouthpiece of the 412 Church and Pastor Tim Thompson. Please vote yes to approve the June Pride Proclamation Month. Do not let your fellow council member Jessica put the city of Temecula into our national news cycle and make a mockery of our city once again. Jessica's antics and her religious position is getting old, making a mockery of our city. I have lived in Temecula for 34 years." The next speaker is Gillian Larson. "I am not able to be here tonight, as I have a board commitment, so my comment is via email this time. Once again, I commend you on your leadership in continuing to create the city we all want to live in and be proud of. The list of proclamations on your agenda once again reflects your commitment to recognizing all those groups that fit perfectly into the city's seven core values, quality of life master plan, which can be seen on the city's website. I do, however, see an important and significant proclamation missing, and I hope that can be considered and added. First responders, to honor the men and women placing their lives on the line each and every day for us. National Day is October 28th. Youth Week, to celebrate and support our youth, to encourage their potential and promise, which is our future. The National Week is in June, from June 13th to 19th. Senior Citizen Day, to recognize all the contributions our seniors have made and will make for our city with all the years of their experience. National Day is August 21st. And all cancer awareness, this is prostate awareness, recognized twice. Perhaps all cancer awareness can be recognized in October. And lastly, Physicians Week. The past years through COVID have demonstrated the significant value of their care. National Week is in March. If there are any proclamations that are personally distasteful to any of our council members, I hope the meeting is not hijacked again with a personal agenda and the proclamation list vote to approve is not delayed. And it is decided that if any council member objects to any of the proclamations, they stay home the night of that proclamation, or step off the dais. An expressed hateful personal bias has no place on the council dais." The next speaker is Jeff Whitick. "This email is intended to communicate our strong support for the continued inclusion of Pride Month in the city's of Temecula's 2023 proclamations list. The continued support of Pride Month and its inclusion in the city's proclamation list is essential to encourage a diverse and vibrant community, and is vital to further elevate the quality of life of all city residents. While the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution establishes the right of everyone in the United States to practice his or her own religion, or no religion at all, the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment prohibits government from encouraging or promoting or establishing religion in any way. The exclusion of Pride Month from the city's proclamation list based on council member, based on council members' religious beliefs would appear to be a clear example of city council acting to promote the beliefs of a particular religion, which violates the fundamental intent of the Establishment Clause. Temecula city council members must never forget that our city was not incorporated to promote religious beliefs. The city of Temecula is not a theocracy." The next speaker is Giro Roto. "Once again, the city is being dragged into the ugly spotlight of intolerance as the dishonorable council member Jessica Alexander actively discriminates against the LGBTQ-plus community in her shameful attempt to abolish the June Pride Month proclamation. I have a simple request this time of the remaining city council members. Please put Alexander on a leash, or better yet, a muzzle. She clearly does not understand that, one, LGBTQ-plus members of our community belong to a federally protected class and deserve to live, work, visit, and to be celebrated just as everyone else. And, two, the dais is not her personal pulpit to spread her intolerant views. It is highly inappropriate for her to attempt to assert her religious belief upon the entirety of Temecula. And to Ms. Alexander, you swore an oath. Perhaps an oath doesn't mean much to you, your religion, or your God, but that oath is significant to the citizens of Temecula. You don't get to pick and choose which citizens you serve. You serve the entire population of Temecula, not just those who worship the same deity as you. Any use of your political power or influence for your personal religious bullying is highly inappropriate and illegal. If your personal religious beliefs are an impediment to doing the work of the council, then you should abstain from voting, or better yet, resign." The next speaker is Eva Smith. "My name is Eva Smith. I am a mom, wife, retired telecommunications engineer, and an entrepreneur. I am also a 25-year resident of Temecula, a Christian, and a Temecula voter. It has come to my attention that, once again, Jessica Alexander is trying to disenfranchise the vulnerable members of our community by making a request that the city of Temecula consider revoking Pride Month. Her requests are discriminatory, targeting, bullying, and attacking the local LGBTQ-plus community, who are our neighbors, and deserve to live happily, feel loved, and feel safe. It is not lost on me that in June 2022, she excused herself from a city council meeting where our LGBTQ-plus community, including local high school students, were recognized. There is no room for a normal high school experience for our LGBTQ-plus youth when there is actual discrimination by any city council member of the city of Temecula. There is no normalcy for LGBTQ-plus residents and business owners when there is discrimination within the walls of the city of Temecula City Council. Many of us knowingly and unknowingly have family members who also identify as LGBTQ-plus. Homophobic beliefs are not Christian behavior. This is not loving. This is not merciful. This is not compassionate. This is not of God. This is harmful. As a member of the nonpartisan Temecula City Council, our city council members took an oath to represent the, all the constituents of the city of Temecula. As a member of the nonpartisan Temecula City Council, you took an oath to honor and respect all members of our community regardless of sex, age, gender, sexual orientation, or religious beliefs. The Pride Month proclamation provides our LGBTQ-plus community with recognition, visibility, dignity, and equality. The annual Pride Month proclamation makes our LGBTQ community feel respected and seen, and has an immeasurable impact on the culture, civic, and economic success of the city. Revoking Pride Month would give the city the reputation that Temecula is a homophobic city. Revoking Pride Month would..." Revoking Pride Month would negatively affect tourism and reduce the over six hundred million dollars, six hundred million of travel spending in our city. As LGBTQ plus community and allies would seek other places to travel, revoking Pride Month would make our local LGBTQ plus community more, more vulnerable and target them for further discrimination and risk of suicide. Suicide rates among youth ages fifteen to twenty-four have increased two hundred percent in the last fifty years. According to the Trevor Project, LGBTQ youth are not inherently prone to suicide because of their sexual orientation or gender identity, but rather placed at higher risk because of how they are mistreated and stigmatized in society. As someone who has attended the funeral of several youth and young adults who have succumbed to suicide, I am asking you not to contribute to the mistreatment of LGBTQ youth and adults in our community. Make LGBTQ plus community feel loved, seen, respected, and honored. Please keep Temecula's Pride Month proclamation. The next speaker, I have three more left, is Samantha Nguyen. Once again, we as a city find ourselves having to defend our rights against Councilwoman, against Councilwoman Alexander. Her new target goal of removing Pride Month from the proclamations is homophobic, discriminatory, and ignorant. Alexander took an oath to represent the city as a whole. However, in my year of living in Temecula, I have only seen her represent her best interests. Religion has no place in policies, hence the separation of church and state. If Alexander wishes to stand in front of people preaching her beliefs, she should have looked into becoming a pastor and not a city councilwoman. From abortion rights to Pride Month, she continues pulling the religion card whenever convenient. Has she ever had barbecue pork while in Temecula? Leviticus eleven seven eight says that's a no, big, a big no-no. Have her children watched Harry Potter? Now, now, Alexander Leviticus twenty twenty-seven says wizards should be put to death. What would her religion say if she was watching them for entertainment? I sure hope she hasn't checked out Red Lobster's shrimp deals, given selfish, shellfish is off the table. Has her husband been to the barber? You shall not round off the hair on your temples or mar the edges of your beard, says Leviticus nineteen twenty-seven. Let's not forget, the women should keep silence in the churches, writes Saint Paul in First Corinthians fourteen thirty-four to thirty-five. If, if Alexander is so intent on representing her religion, she should remain consistent. She can't stand in front of our community and pick and choose when she wants to be a good Christian or Catholic. This is not an attack on religion. I support everyone's right to believe what and who they want to believe in. However, there is an issue when those beliefs begin to impact the lives of others. If Alexander doesn't believe in the LGBTQIA community, then if a woman asks her on a date, don't worry, they won't. Yikes. Then she should simply say, no, you don't want to celebrate Pride Month, then don't. I am so glad I could solve that very difficult issue for her. The solution was clearly very confusing for her to get to. Councilwoman Alexander represents a walking contradiction. She uses her religion as a card when it is convenient and benefits her. I will remind you again that she is supposed to represent our community, not herself, not her religion, not her church, or cult, AKA our school board, or where she may come from. When we moved to Temecula, we felt that this was a warm, welcoming community. However, it feels that you are only welcomed or supported here if you follow the beliefs of everyone else. Everyone has a voice. Everyone deserves love. Have we learned nothing about what hate does to our world? How the lack of acceptance and discrimination also severely impacts depression and suicide in the LGBTQIA community is what Temecula wants to represent? Not allowing people to be happy with who they are, silencing an entire community who deserves to feel like they do belong in this city. Let me finish by saying this. My safety, comfort, relationship with God, or sexuality has never felt threatened by a member of the LGBTQIA community. I can't say the same for the religious community, which constantly targets my rights as a woman. Alexander, you can believe what you want to believe, just as we have no right to tell you to get an abortion, what religion you believe in, what you should eat, who you should love, or what job you should have, because it is your body and you have a choice and freedom to be whoever you want. You have no right to tell anyone else what they can celebrate, who they can love, or what they can do with their bodies. Please remember that the Respect for Marriage Act was signed into public law on December thirteen, twenty twenty-two by real members of government. Alexander, it's time for a reality check. Get back to focusing on recycling, community funds, and parks and recreation issues. Keep your religion out of our city and inside of your church. The next speaker is Dakota Chambers. I write today on behalf of my husband and myself, who have been residents of the city since twenty twenty, in support of keeping Pride Month for our community. If your objection is based on religious liberty, then you should not have ran to represent all of our citizens. In addition, if that is your reason for proposing this measure, and my simple response would be to not attend the events. Just because you personally do not want to recognize this month does not mean you get to strip it away from those of us in a protected class who pay our taxes and who look forward to bringing this part of the Temecula community and allies together every year. My protected rights and freedoms do not end just because they run up against someone who has a personal conflict. The freedom of religion is no more protected than my freedom from religion. A very concerned Temecula citizen, taxpayer, and member of the LGBTQ plus community who lives alongside everyone else in this great city. And the last speaker is David Burrows. Please do not remove anything from the calendar. Temecula should honor its LGBTQ plus residents. They are our family members and friends. It would be shameful to take away this recognition away from them and not reflect well on Temecula at all. Discrimination based on religious beliefs is un-American. Mr. Mayor, that includes all of the in-person comments and the emailed comments on this item.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Before we go into, uh, questions, comments from council members, barring any objection from you all, I would like to take just a five-minute recess. Councilmember, Councilmember Alexander had asked for just a quick break, um, personal break. So we will, um, adjourn or we'll take a recess for about five minutes. We'll be back at, uh, seven forty. All right. All right. Welcome back, everyone. Thank you for, uh, letting us take five-minute recess. All right. We are on item number fourteen, approve the public recognition policy and annual proclamation list. We've heard the staff report. We just heard from the community. And I will now turn it over to, uh, my council colleagues, and I'll start with Mayor Protem Stewart. Questions or comments?
Yeah. Um, Madam City Clerk, could you list off all the inclusionary, um, proclamations?
Yes. Uh, Mayor Protem Stewart, um, it is important to note that these, um, particular, um, proclamations that we are referring to as inclusionary proclamations, they were unilaterally kind of assigned as inclusionary, um, um, proclamations for the ease of reference
Right.
um, um, by the previous city council so that we didn't have to list each of one of them separately.
Yeah.
And there are others on that list of sixty-five that could also be considered inclusionary.
Okay.
Uh, but for convenience purposes, these are the ones that were referenced as inclusionary.
Okay.
African American History Month, Women's History Month, Asian Pacific Heritage Month, Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month, National Hispanic Heritage Month, American Indian Heritage Month.
Okay. Are, are we in council discussion or are we just asking questions?
Um, I'm comfortable moving to discussion.
Okay.
You can ask questions if you feel like it, but we can discuss.
No. So, um, I just want to say that the city of Temecula represents everyone. And these inclusionary, uh, proclamations, all of them, um, exclude people. And so when we, when we, when we bring one group up above the entire city, we, we basically exclude everyone else. And so I have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with any one of them, though. I mean, I don't have a problem with any of those proclamations that are inclusionary. I do have a problem at this level of government using this platform to promote another group over another. And that, that's, that's my, uh, issue with the inclusionary proclamations. So because I don't have a problem with any of them, I would love to still see these proclamations made just at our ready commission. I think our ready commission is the perfect venue for these inclusionary proclamations because that's what they do. And, and frankly, there's a lot of groups that are excluded that might be found out that we can include them into another proclamation or, or whatever. But, but I think that level is more appropriate for all these inclusionary, um, proclamations than this level. Because at this level of government, we represent the entire city and everybody who lives here. And when we take a particular group and, you know, elevate them above the rest of us, I think that is a bad example for a government to be. Government shouldn't be doing that. Government should not promote, um, groups above other groups. And so, um, so that's my suggestion, is we take the inclusionary ones, approve them all, but take the inclusionary ones and give them to a ready commission who is more set up for that type of, um, uh, proclamations or recognitions. So that's just my opinion. You guys talk it over.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kalfis, if you're interested, go ahead.
Absolutely. So, uh, as you all know, I was not here the past year. Um, and we've, as we've seen tonight, we dedicate a lot of time, uh, to these proclamations. And I believe, uh, city council's purposes are ensuring that the roads are maintained, that public safety is fully staffed, uh, and work on the beautification of, of our city. Um, and, and tonight is a, a good example of the amount of time that we have dedicated to, uh, things not on, uh, that list. Um, and the, and as Councilmember Stewart, or Mayor Protem Stewart said, there are, we represent the entire city. There are people who agree with certain, uh, proclamations, and there may be people that disagree with certain proclamations. And we are called here to represent everyone. And I think all of us, um, I'll speak for myself, but I, I truly believe that all of us believe that everyone has the right to live as productive citizens. And we would never do anything to restrict anyone's rights. We are not up here making laws. Uh, we are firmly against any form of discrimination. And, uh, I, I personally absolutely support the rights of every individual. But as Mayor Protem Stewart said, um, I believe, uh, I would agree with you that I believe the, uh, ready commission is a great place. It is the commission of inclusivity, uh, to present these proclamations. And I, I mean, personally, I want to bring everyone together, uh, regardless of race, gender, uh, religion. Uh, I believe that everyone should feel seen and be heard. But I think this, uh, chamber and what we are doing up here is we're getting away from the main purpose of city council. Um, and I think that a great place for these proclamations, the inclusivity proclamations, uh, would be, uh, the commission dedicated to inclusivity, which is the Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion, uh, Commission.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Alexander.
I'm going to keep this super short. I'm in agreeance with the both of you. That's it.
All right. Councilmember Brown, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you. Um, thank you all, uh, for the comments, but, um, this is pretty easy for me because, um, it's about awareness and it's about education, each one of these proclamations. And it's about the struggles, um, that each one of these, um, uh, individuals or groups have had to get where they are. And so it's education and awareness, and it's not about support. Um, and so I look forward to, uh, affirming, um, the entire list, unless we, um, make motions to add, um, to this list in its entirety. So I support it, um, the way it is. And I think, um, bumping it down to the ready commission that represents the city, what's the difference?
All right. So I appreciate everyone's, uh, thoughts tonight. I appreciate the community coming out and, and, and having this conversation. You know, when this was on consent initially, we had a conversation of bringing it here for the benefit of the new council. And I feel like, you know, in, in many ways, we're, you know, as a council, we're sort of turning that new leaf, right? So we want to have these conversations and, and we acknowledge that at the past council and realize that, uh, we want to include, uh, everyone's, uh, thoughts and, and feelings in this process. You know, and I don't need to go on, on and on. I, I stated before and I'll state again, I think it's important that we do this. Uh, I think it's important that we do it at the city council level. Uh, I think it's, um, I think it's meaningful. I think you could kind of parse out and say, you know, we don't do this as government, but we're going to do it as government under, you know, a different sort of label, right? Like we're saying, we're going to do it at a commission level. It's still government, you know, it's still, it's still the city. You know, we do all sorts of things beyond, uh, roads and bridges and public safety. I mean, one of the items tonight was, uh, was a overview of everything that we did as a city in twenty twenty-two. And it's an extremely exhaustive list of varying things that we do, uh, as an organization. Um, I certainly understand, um, perspectives on, uh, on pride. I don't agree with them, but I certainly understand, uh, the perspectives of, 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 of some people that, uh, that feel we're elevating, um, you know, a certain group for, um, for something that they don't quite agree with. And, and while I understand that, uh, we are acknowledging, uh, subsets of our community. I don't see it as an elevation above one person. I don't feel like, you know, if someone gets, you know, dyslexia awareness day, I don't feel, you know, in any way that, you know, that's an affront to me. I'm supportive of, of those things. And, and as well as, um, you know, Native American Heritage Month. I went to the powwow at Pachanga over the weekend and talked about culture and talking about heritage in our valley and, and just to be able to support that. I would hate to kick the Native American Heritage Month to the ready commission. I really would. I mean, I would struggle to do that. And that's really what we're saying. We're saying, um, some of these are, you know, air quotes controversial, right? In many places, these, these things aren't controversial. But here we're, we're seeing a little bit of controversy surrounding it. And for me, um, I would certainly, um, not support sending, um, this inclusionary, uh, list to the ready commission. I think it needs to happen here. And as our city clerk mentioned, I mean, I can make a case for inclusionary on quite a few of these, beyond just that sort of list that we created. Uh, so for me, uh, supporting, you know, moving these to the ready commission, as much as I love the ready commission, I think the ready commission does great work. Like I said last year, folks, this is the pinnacle. This is who we are. This is what we stand for. This is our community in total. And if there's something that, uh, we don't agree with, um, that's okay because we're doing it as a group and, um, and we can sort of work through those issues. But, uh, for me, it's, um, uh, I think they're valuable here. And I think it's important that, uh, we not, uh, send a message to, um, all the proclamation recipients that our city clerk listed off as somehow less than. Those folks have already come here, and if, if they don't come back, they're going to say why. And, and, and maybe that happens, right? And we'll all sort of be, uh, responsible for that to the broader community when and if that happens. But for me, I couldn't support that. That's where I stand. And, um, I don't think we have to go back and forth and certainly entertain a motion, and we can, uh, we can vote.
I'd like to make a motion.
So actually, I need, yeah. So, Mr. Mayor, I need clarification at this point because, like, for example, um, we just, those, those six that we mentioned, I did also mention that that, that inclusionary statement was purely used by staff for ease of reference.
Right.
So, um, there are others that could be considered inclusionary. So for example, um, you know, we've got Women's History Month on the inclusionary proclamation, but we've got veterans on the proclamation list too. So are those considered inclusionary as well? As much as I don't want to go line by line, I'm going to need some clarification, um, to understand how, what, what, is it, are you just talking about these six? Or are you talking about any of the other ones that could also be considered inclusionary?
Is that premature before the motion?
Why don't we, so what if we do this? I'll make a motion that we, we remain, uh, with the inclusionary proclamations that we've done in the past, uh, at the city council level, and nothing changes. If that fails, we can go line by line.
Okay.
So I have one quick question, though. So thinking about this, though, is the fact that, you know, we are talking about inclusion in general. So is it fair enough to say, like, we got this letter today of including the, um, Arab-American heritage, the Jewish-American heritage? Why, again, are we elevating one over the others? So maybe these type of cultural, um, proclamations or something also that would be a wonderful place for the ready commission as well? And there are several in there. So that way, again, we don't get somebody saying, well, you're elevating this group and not this group.
And I would like to hit on that, um, Councilmember Alexander, uh, where I agree that there are so many.
And I would like to hit on that, Councilmember Alexander, where I agree that there are so many, like, right? I was handed this list, and again, I wasn't here the past year with all the civil discourse that went on. But I was handed this list of 65 proclamations. And when I first got it, my first initial thought was, it's a lot of proclamations. And then we get these letters as city council members with more proclamations, which to include Scottish American Heritage Month, Jewish American Heritage Month, Cystic Fibrosis Week. And the list goes on and on. And in reality, the list is 65 proclamations this year. It can very well be 165. And my fear is that I do not want these proclamations to become so convoluted and so diluted that they lose their intended purpose, right? The intended purpose of these proclamations are to say that we see you, we hear you, we recognize you as a part of our community. And my fear is that if we have these, again, air quotes, inclusionary proclamations, we are leaving out some and therefore creating exclusionary ones that are not on this list. And like Councilmember Alexander and Mayor Pro Tem Stewart have said, there are so many that are not on this list where I feel that we may be doing an injustice by approving this proclamations list if we do not include the 100-plus that could be added to this proclamation list. And I think, I just want to say that I truly believe that it might even be elevating them up if we give them to the Ready Commission. I don't necessarily believe it is kicking it down to the Ready Commission. The great thing about the Ready Commission is the proclamations would still be handed out in the city hall chambers where they wanted to be handed these proclamations. They would still be handed out by city council members, mayor and mayor pro tem that wanted to attend these proclamation presentations. So again, I, my fear is that it becomes so diluted that they lose their intended purpose. And I do not want that to happen. And I feel that kicking, not, I don't think they're kicking it down to the Ready Commission, but almost elevating it to the Ready Commission who their sole purpose, right? Race, equity, diversity, and inclusion is to be inclusive. So having the commission that we dedicated to inclusivity, giving them these inclusionary proclamations that, again, the list of inclusionary proclamations was created prior to my arrival on council. But I would say those six that are in that inclusionary list be given to the Ready Commission, the inclusionary commission.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second on the floor. I'll amend my motion to include Jewish American Heritage in the subcommittee? Like, because we have a subcommittee for this. So the subcommittee, right? We'll have a subcommittee.
So just to be clear, all of our proclamations, the only reason they're on the list is because there is also a state or federal proclamation associated with it as well. So if we get a request for any other proclamation, we would go ahead and do the verification of, does it have a state or federal proclamation associated with it as well? It does not go to subcommittee. And if somebody asks us for it that particular year, we would go ahead and issue the standard language.
Okay. And that's really where I was getting at, is that we need to vet a lot of these and make sure that they are being federally recognized and state-recognized.
Okay, just to confirm, the motion that we are, I'm not sure if you're going to clarify it right now, but we are going to vote on, if we do vote against it, we will go line by line with the possibility of moving these six right now stated inclusionary policies or proclamations to another commission.
Yes, that would be the next step.
Copy. Thank you.
Also, if we want to add anything to these, is this the time that we're going to add? Because there was a couple that came out in public comments, and there was a few more that I wanted to see if the council was interested in adding to this list.
Yeah, I mean, I would certainly entertain, you know, amending the motion and assuming Councilmember Brown would do the same. This is the time for that.
Okay, perfect.
Is it the time to add to the list? Or does that go to the subcommittee to vet and then come back to the council?
Well, we're talking right now. We're having the conversation. So this is, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it's appropriate right now. We're having the conversation. We might as well just have the conversation right now.
Mr. Mayor, if I can make a suggestion, if the policy is acceptable to all council members, let's go ahead and approve the policy. Just have a motion to approve the policy. And then we can go ahead and go line by line down the proclamation list. And if anybody wants to go ahead and take one off or put one on, they can go ahead and do that. And then we'll take a motion to go ahead and accept the list.
Fair enough.
So the first motion, if we could have a first and a second to approve the policy.
Motion to approve the policy. Second.
But not the proclamation list, correct?
Not the proclamation list, simply the policy.
All right.
The policy passes unanimously. Now we can go ahead and go line by line through the proclamation list if you guys desire. And let us know if you think it's inclusionary or not. It should be added to that list of six inclusionary. And if you want to add anything, we would, as staff, go ahead and verify that whatever you are suggesting is also consistent with state and federal, and then go ahead and issue upon request.
Do we want to start with that then? I don't know how many people have additions.
So Madam City Clerk, are you wanting to read down the lists? And, or are you asking for individual council members to individually add an item to that inclusionary list?
Mr. Mayor, I have the list of the six that I read off. If you can facilitate just going down the list, and if anybody has any comments, we'll go ahead and record those comments.
Okay, let's just do month by month. So we just issued Human Trafficking Prevention Month here in City Hall. Mentoring Month, is that inclusionary? February, obviously African American History Month is already there. American Heart Month, is that inclusionary? Okay, moving to March, Vietnam War Commemoration Day, is that inclusionary? Okay, moving to April, Arab American Heritage Month, is that inclusionary? Okay, I heard a couple mhm's. I'm guessing that's a yes. A yes. Autism Awareness Month. Child Abuse Prevention Month. Crime Victims Rights Week. DMV Donate Life Month. Education and Sharing Day. Innovation Month, Library Week. Okay, moving to May, Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Month is already there. Bike Month, no. Tourism, no. Conservation, Fentanyl Awareness Day?
No.
Hospital Week. Mental Health Month. Municipal Clerks Week. Nurses Week. Public Gardens Week. Public Works Week. Travel and Tourism Week. Water Safety Month. June, Juneteenth, is that inclusionary?
I would say.
I hear a yes from Stu and a no from Councilmember Brown.
What's the definition of inclusionary?
Well, in the, in the, in the Juneteenth one, I guess that is more celebrating an event versus a particular.
Correct.
So I guess I would say that that would not be inclusionary then.
Okay. Make Music Temecula Day, Purple Heart Day in August. Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Constitution Week. Hispanic Latino Heritage Month. Yes?
Yes.
Preparedness Month. Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Service Dog Month. Children's Environmental Health Month. Cybersecurity Awareness Month. Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Dyslexia Awareness Month. I mean, that is a subset of people. Fire Prevention Week. Freedom from Workplace Bullying. Greek Food and Festival Month.
Yes.
Really? Okay, I heard a yes. Is there? Yeah.
Maybe I just don't understand what is. Because again, going culturally, if I, and I'm just being real, if we're looking at cultures again, there it is again with Greek festival. We can sit there and say, well, what about the Italian food? What, you know, what about all of the other different types of cultures? So that to me goes right along with that cultural diversity to go to the Ready Commission.
So would that include Juneteenth as well?
No, because that was a historical moment.
Okay.
So Greek Food Festival Month is inclusionary. Okay, Manufacturing Month, White Can Awareness Day. Family Court Awareness Month. Native American Heritage Month. Yes. Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Pachanga Puesca Mountain Day.
No.
No.
Because that's an event also.
Event, yeah. Small Business Saturday. Valley Gives Day. Veteran Owned Business Day. Veteran and Military Families Day. World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day. Day of Disability, Day of Persons with Disabilities. All right. And then Annual Community Candlelight Tribute Day, Because Nice Matters Week, and Circus Vargas Days. Relay for Life, Sister City, Dyson Anniversary Toastmasters, and the Voices of Children, CASA Volunteer Day. We have exhausted the list.
And now which ones would you like to add?
I think the ones that we, you heard a yea on were that there was a couple adds.
I checked, Mark, if you want me to read them off for you?
Yeah. Arab American Heritage Month.
We, we have those. Which ones would you like to add beyond this list?
No, no, no. To bring brand.
On top of what's on here.
Oh, I don't have anything to add.
I do. I do. Okay, so one of the things, National First Responders Day, which is in October, that would definitely be one I'd like to see bring forward. Either that, or I know there's also a National Police Week. I know, I was trying to take a look as far as for firefighters, what that looks like. And I believe if you guys, especially two of you on the dais right now, can tell me, I think it's October.
It's Fire Prevention Week.
Fire Prevention Week. Okay, so does that cover firefighters though, or just fire prevention?
Fire prevention.
So do we want to do like, could we do a first responders? So we're including everybody, National First Responders, which is in October?
We, I think we already do fire prevention, but we understand we'll, we'll do some additional research and make sure we incorporate both first responders and firearm police separately.
Okay, wonderful. The other one I really liked, and I had kind of had on my mind, and somebody said it during comments, was Senior Day. So something along those lines, I believe. They said it was in August, if we can just check on that one. The other last one that I have, I have two, a question after this too, is Adoption Month. It's a national adoption month, so that definitely is a national holiday that they celebrate for that month, and that's in November. And the other one, just out of curiosity, and I guess I'm just bringing this to the council, I noticed a lot of like cancer awareness. So what does that typically look like? Do we celebrate it separately? Do we celebrate it together? This is kind of a new area for me. I just saw that there's lots of them. So what, even Randy, like, what does that usually look like?
Yeah, it's because the requesters are different organizations and agencies. So all of these folks, we do not proactively go out and ask folks to, if they want a proclamation. These are all folks that separately come from different organizations asking us for a proclamation.
Excellent, okay. And I believe that's all I had. So it was just those, those couple right there. Thank you for your time.
Great. Anyone else like to add anything?
I'd like to add the Jewish American Heritage Month, the one that we all got in the mail there, the month of May. And I had an exhaustive list that I did not bring because I did not think we would add all of these to them. So until next time.
Could that go to the memorial, to the, well, it's not a memorial anyways. I know we, we kind of talked about that. But if a council member, I believe, wants to bring up something during the time, they have the ability still to do that, I think we had talked about.
Yes.
And go through the proper chain.
Yeah, and Councilmember Kalfis, if you have a list of potential proclamations that are, that you would like to go ahead and forward to staff, we would be happy to go ahead and do the preliminary work to see if they are state or federal recognized. And then the next time we bring this about, we can definitely add those on there. And if you would like to include them earlier, we can bring it back, just as a consent calendar for those that are affiliated with state and federal.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Okay, anything else to add?
So, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, I would like to very clearly state the motion that I'm going to hear with respect to the proclamations list. So the proclamation list is being approved as presented with the exception of African American History Month, Women's History Month, Arab American Heritage Month, Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Month, Pride Month, Hispanic Latino Heritage Month, Greek Food Festival Month, Native American Heritage Month. Going to the Ready Commission. And then also the National First Responders and Fire Prevention Proclamation, Senior Day, Adoption Month, and Jewish, Adoption Month being added to the city council. The Jewish Heritage Month will be also added to the Ready Commission list. Is that correct?
Okay, I heard you loud and clear. So go ahead and someone would like to motion and second that, and then we'll vote.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, who is the second?
Kalfis.
Okay, and that passes three-two with myself and Councilmember Brown dissenting. All right, thanks, everyone. Okay, we'll move to item number 15, which is approve annual legislative platform for calendar year 2023. We'd like to have a staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, this is me again.
Welcome.
The first meeting in January is typically the administrative council meeting, so that's why a lot of these items happen to be my items. Typically, this is what you would find on the consent calendar. But because we do have two new council members, the city manager, in his wisdom, decided to go ahead and place it on the, the business portion of the agenda to make sure that we have a proper understanding of a legislative platform. So this is our presentation regarding the city's annual legislative platform. Next slide, please. So for those that haven't engaged with the legislative platform before, you might be wondering, what is a legislative platform? So a legislative platform, it's a policy framework that allows an organization to go ahead and respond to legislative issues in an effective and efficient manner. So that policy framework could be for a private sector, it could be for a public sector. In our case, it's definitely for public sector purposes. But basically, it's a state of policies that allows an organization to respond quickly to legislative issues. Next slide. So what's in a legislative platform? So in a legislative platform, you would have general and specific policy statements regarding the topics that fall within the jurisdiction of that particular organization, irrespective of whether it's public or private. And so you would have, just like, again, general statements that would be reflective of the industry at large. And then you, maybe you would have specific policy statements that are specific to that particular organization. Next slide, please. How is a legislative platform used? So this, legislative platforms are used to go ahead and share with lobbyists and staff. They use those legislative platforms to go ahead and have a dialogue and take action based on the policy statements in the platform. So the platform itself is kind of like the marching orders for how a legis, how an organization wants to respond legislatively on its particular issues. Next slide, please. So Temecula's legislative platform. The city council unanimously approved the first legislative platform for the city in May 2015. And the legislative platform has been approved continuously on consent since that time. It was created initially using previous legislative positions taken by the city council. We reviewed priorities for cities across the state and federal levels. We did legal research. We had discussions with city council and staff. We had discussions with legislative staff from our, with our senators and our assembly members. And we also had a great deal of dialogue with our lobbyists. Typically, few substantive changes are happening year over year because the general and specific positions of the city on legislative items, they don't usually change year over year. And then basically, after council approval, a legislative platform is disseminated to our lobbyists, our state and federal lobbyists, and then our elected representatives as well, and their staff. Next slide, please. So it, what's in Temecula's legislative platform? As I mentioned, it's a combination of general and city-specific policy statements. The general policy statements are commonly accepted positions on topics related to governance in cities across the state of California. The city-specific policy statements are positions that this city has taken over the last 30-plus years in the legislative space. In everything, we incorporate recovery and funding principles. And all of our policies. And all of our policy statements in the legislative platform, they are consistent with all of our governing documents. So our general plan, our quality-of-life master plan, Trails and Bike Ways master plan, all of that. Next slide, please. The policy statements fall under one of eight primary topics. So you have administrative services. This is usually Brown Act, Public Records Act, Conflicts of Interest, all of that. Community services, that's all your parks and rec staff. Employee relations, that's all labor. Environmental quality speaks for itself. Housing, community, economic development. Public safety, that's all of our police and fire. Rev and tax, that's all of our finances. And then transportation, communication, and public works. So those are the eight main topics that are in a city's legislative platform. Next slide, please. So sometimes, I'm, I'm a little bit of a visual learner too. I've said a lot of things about city-specific statements and general policy statements. And so this is an example of how all of that works together. So for example, environmental quality, it's one of the eight issue areas. The first thing you see there is in this issue area, here are the things that we, we track. Air, water quality, climate change, SEQA, waste management. These are the general things that fall under environmental quality. The next four statements you see are, these are general policy statements that pretty much all cities subscribe to with respect to water accessibility, with respect to renewable energy. The next six statements there that you see, those are specific positions that the city of Temecula has taken over the years. You'll see a resolution from '95, '96, '98, '99, 2008, 2011 was the last time we updated this. And again, this should have very little change year over year because your legislative platform shouldn't be more than 10 pages or something. Because at the end of the day, that is what you are using to walk the halls at state and federal levels. So these are just city-specific items that, that we've taken positions on. You'll see, for example, the second bullet point under city-specific policy statements. We have, we support legislation and funding for flood control and prevention programs, including, including those that affect Marietta Creek and Temecula Creek. Because those are specific to us, that's where they fall under the city-specific policy statement. But up nor, up above that, in general policy statements, you'll see that we broadly, cities broadly, support legislation and funding to create sustainable, stable water supply, encourage conservation for water resources, and reduce urban runoff. So you can see the visual difference there between city-specific and general policy statements. Next slide, please. For our procedure, it's a very streamlined process through which the city council staff and city lobbyists can act very quickly. Sometimes we get less than 24 hours' notice that a hearing has been put together in Sacramento for the following morning. So this is the document that we use to respond to that. If a, if an issue falls within the legislative platform, then we can go ahead and support that issue or oppose that issue as it is consistent with our legislative platform. The positions we typically take are support, oppose, support if amended, oppose unless amended, and sometimes we just send a letter of concern. Any initial requests to take a position on legislative matters are approved by the city manager and legislative director with notification to the full city council. So this is what you've seen over the years, where you might see an email from Erin and I that says, we just got notice. SB 9 was a great example of that. We just got notice that they threw on another hearing for SB 9 tomorrow morning. And unless we hear from you, council, otherwise, this is consistent with our legislative platform. So we're going to go ahead and have our lobbyist lodge a position at the hearing tomorrow morning. So that's how, from a practical standpoint, it works. We do coordinate an electronic signature through the mayor. And any requests that do not fall under the legislative platform, we do not take a position on. And if there is time, we put it on the agenda for the next city council agenda. So for example, last year, the city council took a position on Proposition 26 and Proposition 27. Those were not on our legislative platform. We brought it before the city council. The city council took a position. That is actually the only change this year in our legislative platform. Next slide, please. So with that, that reflects the 2023 change. So what we added under housing, community, and economic development in light of the city council's positions on 26 and 27 was that we support legislation permitting expansion of in-person gaming on tribal lands, including lands owned by Pachanga, and that we oppose legislation permitting online gaming in the state, in the state of California in lieu of or notwithstanding in-person gaming options on tribal lands, including Pachanga. So you can see how it fits in. So those two statements will, and are under city-specific, under the housing, community, and economic development, changes of the 2023 legislative platform. Next slide, please. And with that, we would ask you to have any discussion, provide any direction, and approve the annual legislative platform for 2023.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Cindy Clerk. So we'll just, I'll turn to my council colleagues for questions. And then if we have any public comments, we'll move to that. And then we'll go into discussion and move the item. So are there any questions of staff? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Oh, sorry.
Just one question. So if we approve this, at any point during the year that something comes up, are we able to revisit and add something?
Absolutely. So we, this is just an annual process. But at any point, any council member can go ahead, under items for future agendas, ask to bring back anything, and there's a process associated with that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions? Madam City Clerk, did we have any public comments on this item?
We do not.
Okay, great. We'll move into comments, and, or sorry, discussion, and move the item. Any comments?
Move approval.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Let's vote.
Councilmember Kalfis.
Yeah, there it is.
Got it.
Okay, great. That passes 5-0. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we'll move to item number 16, which is consider appointments to the city council committee, committees for calendar year 2023. I'll try to facilitate this. Typically, we just go down the list. So if you have the list in front of you, we can pull it out. If there's something that we can't get a consensus on, we'll try to work through that in, in, in a meaningful way. And then take the, the bulk of these committee assignments as one motion and one vote. So we'll go and start as the commission liaisons. The Community Services Commission is currently, and let me start by saying that there are names on here of existing council members that have served in these roles. And then TBD, those represent spaces where former council members were. This should be open to anyone. If anyone feels like they want to be on something, it's wholly appropriate to just speak up. I'm not going to be able to see everyone, so if you feel like you want to be on something, just, you know, just let me know, and, and we'll work, work through that.
And these are for a year, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, we revisit this at this meeting every single year. And so this will be for the 2023 calendar year. So we'll start with the commission liaisons. The Community Services Commission is currently Stewart.
Yep.
Would like to stay.
Yep.
Okay, Old Town Local Review Board is inactive, and it's currently Alexander. Planning Commission is myself. I'm happily, happy to step off of that if someone would like to jump on that.
I can jump on that one.
Okay.
All right. Were you asking me if I'm staying on the Old Town Local Review Board? Or are we just passing it?
Well, I figure like, since it was inactive, you could certainly stay on it. I guess I was looking at, we have, you know.
Five, right.
Yeah, five, and, but one's inactive. So we could potentially, I guess, potentially put a second person on a different commission.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
If you'd like to get off of it.
I'd like to change.
Okay.
Yeah, this year.
So since.
Been doing it for two years.
Is it, would it be appropriate, since Old Town Local Review Board is inactive, to not have someone? Do we need someone?
So I think you should still have someone because we, it may not be inactive for the entire year.
Right.
And we are in the process, working with community development, to rework the purpose and then do a full recruitment. So that will not be inactive for the entire year.
Okay.
Mr. Deputy City Manager, am I correct on that?
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. So we're, we're in the process of coming up with a, a new strategy for that, that board. And actually, hopefully, it'll, it'll be a lot more exciting before the end of the year, so.
Okay. So we'll need a volunteer for the Old Town Local Review Board.
So Jessica, if you want to do the Planning Commission, I can do the Old Town Review Board. That way you switch it up and don't do the same thing.
I'm looking for a different one.
Okay.
Thank you, though. I appreciate that, Brendan. You want to just keep going down and then?
I can do that one as well, though.
I, I certainly don't mind being a part of the Old Town Local Review Board. I'd hate for anyone listening to feel like we don't want to like participate with them. We'll skip that for now. We'll come back. Public Traffic Safety Commission.
That's one of the ones that I'd like to do.
Myself, as well.
Okay. So I guess you have to.
So looking at that, one of the things I got from staff that I received from a staff report is there, I, I, there's an only male perspective on that. And so that's one of the things that was brought up to my attention, that they are going to be looking for females to be able to bring into that commission. And I would be able to be able to give a different perspective.
A little bit of diversity, huh?
Here we go.
I'd support that.
Okay, fair enough. So Councilmember Brown, would you be willing to serve on Old Town Local Review Board at this point?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, so on the commission liaisons, they are not, they do not meet regularly. They are not used regularly. It's only on an as-needed basis. And so we have Community Services Commission Stewart. We have Old Town Local Review Board Brown. Planning Commission Kalfis. Public Traffic Safety Commission Alexander. And then Ready, you still?
Yeah, I would certainly love to stay on that.
Are we doing two like we did last year, or are we just doing one? I know we talked about having.
We, we did two because they were launching.
Okay.
But they've already been there for two years now. It's up to the council.
Awesome.
Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly okay with it just being one. And these are, again, like, they're as needed. I mean, it's certainly up to the individual council member to, how you want to, you know, sort of interact with the, with the board. You want to have, you know, a coffee with them, invite them into your office, things like that. But it's really to be there first when staff needs you to help with the commission.
And we do have our annual joint meetings. So the full city council still gets to hear from all the commissions at the beginning of the year.
True. Okay, well, moving on to standing committees. These are two members, and these are publicly noticed meetings. So many of these do have people that attend them and make meaningful public comments. So the first one is Arts and Cultural Affairs Subcommittee. Certainly appreciate staying on that one. But I need a partner.
Wong, Wong, Wong.
I'll join you.
City Sustainability Program Subcommittee. It's TBD and Stewart.
I need a partner.
Okay, we need a partner for Mayor Protim.
I can join you on that one.
Okay. Councilmember Kalfis there. E-Government and Temecula Outreach Subcommittee.
Can somebody explain what that was? I was trying to reach out to, to Mayor Schwank, and I'm like, what is that exactly?
Yeah, this is, this is really, I think, between information technology and the city clerk's office. If we wanted to go ahead and get council input, maybe on citywide programs or transitioning to any sort of e-government that is traditionally maybe public outreach in a different way, or those kinds of things.
When we were making significant modifications to the city website and we were standing up content, we used this council subcommittee heavily. So it's, it's probably not going to be heavily used, but we'd like to have it in the event we want to run stuff by you.
I'll, I'll jump on that with you if that's okay.
And I would certainly, if there's another council member that wants to get on there, I would happily step aside. Don't everybody jump at once? Okay, Economic Development Subcommittee. There's a vacancy, and Mayor Protim, Stewart on that one.
I'll stay on it.
I can do that one if nobody else wants to do it?
Okay.
Because that's an EV too, if I'm correct on that one?
No, this is, this is actually.
Or it's part of it. It's similar to, as far as economic development within.
Yeah, it's separate from the incubator.
Right, okay.
It's, it's more or less, though, you'll meet annually to discuss economic development sponsorship-type applications for funding and things of that nature. But also, if there, if we're going to embark on a branding campaign within our economic development division, and marketing and things of that nature, we would involve this subcommittee too.
Okay. I'm going to step down, Brendan. What do you think?
Absolutely, I'll take it.
Okay.
Okay, so Stewart, Kalfis. Old Town Steering Committee is myself and Alexander. We just met today. I appreciate staying on that.
And who's on the Old Town Local Review Board right now?
It's me.
Okay, so you two, I guess, would you want to jump on that one?
If you're coming up, yes.
You can take it.
Okay.
Keep it consistent.
Okay. All right, Finance Subcommittee. We need two volunteers for this role.
I'll do it.
I'll do that as well.
Stewart and Kalfis.
So Councilmember Stewart and Councilmember Kalfis.
Okay, Infill Land Use and Project Review Subcommittee. Councilmember Stewart, if you'd like to stay on, we need another person. I'll go ahead and do that. Infrastructure Beautification Subcommittee, if you'd like to stay on. Councilmember Stewart, you need a partner.
Yep.
I'll hang out with you.
Okay. Councilmember Alexander. Joint City Council TVSD Subcommittee, it's myself, and I'd certainly appreciate staying on that as well. But I need another person. Though, we don't know that the school district will keep this subcommittee. This is fairly new, maybe three, four years. But I don't know that they voted on it, so.
They're voting on it tonight.
Okay. I haven't seen if they decided to do that or not.
Okay.
Maybe someone could tell us, because this might be fruitless if we don't need it, but.
I'll join you in the interim.
Okay, Brown. All right, Military Subcommittee, Alexander and myself.
I'll stay on.
I'll happily step up. And I say happily, just giving people an opportunity. I don't mean that in any negative way. If anyone would like to, to take that, I would step down. I guess I'll stay on it. Move I-15 through Temecula Valley Subcommittee, we need two members.
I'm interested.
Okay, Brown.
I'll do it.
Brown and Stewart. Marietta-Temecula Subcommittee, Alexander, and we need one more.
I can step down if somebody's super interested.
What exactly is this subcommittee?
Just connects us.
I think this was in, in the event that City of Marietta also formed a subcommittee, and we had some type of joint-related project and/or service. But it hasn't met in, I'm going to say, four, four to five years. So it's kind of up to the council if you want to keep that on, on the books or eliminate it.
They haven't met in four or five years?
Yeah.
That's correct. I think we could, I mean, I'm comfortable striking it if something came for.
If there's a need that comes up, we can certainly form one, yeah.
Excellent.
Okay, Parks, Recs, and Community Services Subcommittee, myself and Stewart. I need to stay on this one, or I really want to stay on this one.
And I really want to stay on this one.
Okay, fair enough. We're good? Okay. No, I think that that's a nice subcommittee. We got a lot in the queue. Public Works Subcommittee.
I'll join that one.
I'll join that one with you.
Okay. Brown, Alexander. Surplus Land Act Subcommittee.
I'll join that one.
Kalfis and.
I'd like to do that one, too.
Okay. Kalfis and Stewart. All right, we'll move down to our representative assignments. These meet in person as needed. They're external organizations. So we'll start at the top. The Animal Shelter, Animal Friends of Valley JPA. I'm currently the representative. It conflicts with my SCAG duties. I'm duly elected to SCAG by the, by the city councils of Temecula, Marietta, and Menifee. It became very problematic when we moved to in-person. They do an in-person meeting in Marietta. And I wasn't able to also attend SCAG, which is hybrid. But I was unable to do those, so I need to step off of that.
When do they meet?
It's four times a year. And it's like the, the first Thursday of the month at like 2:00 in Marietta.
I mean, if no one else can do it, I can do it. I got free time, so I could.
Okay.
Way to step up, Stewart.
It just completely conflicts with SCAG, because SCAG runs from, essentially from 9:30 to like 2:30, and I just can't do it. It's a pretty minimal commitment. It is. And, and, you know, being a JPA, that, you know, they have a quorum for the most part with all the other surrounding cities. So if something conflicts, you know, you don't have to make every single meeting, but it is quarterly. Okay, so Mayor Pro Tem Stewart. League of California Cities Voting Delegate, myself with alternate Stewart. And we'll just take the next one at the same time. National League of Cities, myself and Stewart. I think that's typically been the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem for the most part. So we can keep that the same if everyone agrees with that. The Pachanga Tribal Council Representative. I would actually really like to, to lean into this role if there's no one that objects.
I was interested just because it's in my district.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's good. I think that's a good fit, yeah. I think it'll be a good fit there. Okay, Ranch, California Water District Liaison, Stewart, and I'm the alternate. I would, I'll step off and give someone else an opportunity.
I'll stay on as primary.
And if no one wants it, I'll certainly stay on. All right, hearing no one, I will stay on. Southwest Riverside County Energy Authority JPA, I need a partner. It doesn't meet too often, but I recall a couple of subcommittees over the last few years.
Yeah, minimal, but we're getting ready to actually launch, right? This is going to actually energize. Been many years in the making, so there could be a few times a year that we need to convene the JPA.
Yeah. Okay, who wants to join me?
One time.
All right.
Again, if nobody wants to, I'll do it. I mean.
I think we're hitting the nobody wants it phase of the list. Okay, so myself and Mayor Pro Tem Stewart on the JPA, Energy JPA. Temecula Sister City Liaison.
I'll take it if that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll do that one.
I was going to step down from that. So Alexander. Okay, we're moving on to representative assignments. These meet in person. These again are external organizations. Some of these, I think some folks are better fit for these just timing wise. But we'll start at the top. The WR cog, oh, I'm sorry, no, this is Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority, RCA.
I would like to do that.
Okay.
Because I was just elected to the executive board.
And then since WR cog meets on the exact same day, just two hours later, I'd like to
take that, too.
Yeah, that makes, that makes a ton of sense. So we'll, we'll get to WR cog, but for RCA, we need an alternate. If the primary is unable to attend, the alternate is asked to fill in. So would anyone like to serve as the alternate on that?
I'll do that, that's fine.
Alexander. Okay, and then Riverside County Habitat Conservation, Conservation Agency Board, the RCHCA. Alexander is the primary. This meets quarterly on the third Thursday at 11:00 AM.
I'd be willing to step down.
Does anyone else want to take the primary on that?
The kangaroo rat.
If no one wants it, I'll take it. I mean, I got plenty of time, so.
Yeah, I could.
You know something, I'll stay on it. If no, I just figured I'd let, because I know with the other, like for instance, I know your schedule and also with the councilman, Kalfis. I don't know if that's something you would want to take on, just because it meets, I believe, quarterly. So I don't know if that's easier. If not, trust me, I'll stay on because that's usually my working day, too, so.
Yeah. Does, does RCHCA, where did they meet?
It was online. It just moved back into person as a.
But it's in Riverside?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, they're moving, they're wanting to move it around, though. I think last time they, they were trying to move it to some other places as well.
You know, if you want to be the primary, I certainly don't mind serving on that. If you.
Want to do that, that's fine.
Don't want to get off, or I could be the primary, you know. I certainly wouldn't. It doesn't conflict with my schedule and if it's in Riverside, you know, RTA is typically on Thursdays, although not often the third Thursday. But I could serve as the alternate if you want to do primary or vice versa.
Either that. Jessica, did you want to stay on it?
As an alternate? Or are you saying as, as the?
As the primary.
I can be on the primary.
Okay.
I don't mind. I'll just stay on that one.
You stay primary, do you want to serve as alternate?
I could.
Okay, so primary stays Alexander, alternate Stewart. RCTC is TBD and I was the alternate. This will definitely conflict with my schedule since it's on Wednesday.
I think there's a meeting this week.
Correct?
Tomorrow. Board meeting.
And where is that, at Riverside?
Correct. Riverside. So it meets monthly on the second Wednesday at nine thirty in the morning.
I mean, I can do it. It's.
Okay.
Yeah, it's entirely.
So we'll do Stewart as the primary and then, I mean, having myself as an alternate, I just won't be able to make a Wednesday at nine thirty. So it makes no sense for me to stay on as the alternate.
So you need an alternate for that one?
Yeah, we'll need an alternate for that one.
Anybody else stepping?
Although Mayor Pro Tem Stewart is a pretty solid meeting person. Probably never going to be needed, so.
Mm-hmm. I'll step up. You can put my name down.
And you'll probably never have to fill that role.
That's okay.
At least we have a backup.
Sounds good.
Makes it. All right, RTA is myself. We need an alternate. I'd like to stay on RTA. I'm, I'm on the exec committee at RTA, just stepping down as board chair. So I'd like to stay on that. It works with my schedule. And I would need an alternate.
I'll be alternate.
All right, and then WR cog will just need an alternate unless, if you want to stay on as alternate.
Unless somebody else wants it.
Okay, does anyone else want it? All right, it's yours, Councilmember Alexander.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to our ad hoc subcommittees. These are two members. Many of these are going to be two new members completely. So the Alter Property Ad Hoc Subcommittee, we need two members.
Myself.
Okay, Brown.
I'd like to do it, too.
Brown and Stewart. Butterfield, Temecula Parkway Properties Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
I'll be on that one since it's right off my district.
I'll join you since we meet up right there.
Okay.
Okay. Alexander and Kalfis. Council Protocol Manual Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
I can be on that one.
I'll do that one as well.
Okay, Kalfis and Alexander. Community Services Funding Ad Hoc Subcommittee. It's myself and Stewart. I'd like to stay on that.
Yeah.
Like to stay on that. Okay, any objections to that? Okay, Diaz Property Ad Hoc Subcommittee. Two members. I'll serve on that.
I can serve on that with you.
Okay. Schwank and Kalfis. French Valley Parkway Interchange Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
Oh. No, I'm not.
Okay, Councilmember Brown.
I'll do it.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Stewart. General Plan Update Ad Hoc Subcommittee. Councilmembers, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Stewart needs a partner.
I'll jump on that one. If nobody else wants to.
Okay, Alexander and Stewart. Higher Education Ad Hoc Subcommittee, myself, and I would need someone else. Anyone?
Anybody with a higher education.
I could join you on there.
Bueller.
I will join you.
Okay, so Schwank, Kalfis. Hospital Ad Hoc Subcommittee, two members.
Myself.
Okay. Anyone else? I'll do it. Okay, Human Services Ad Hoc Subcommittee. Councilmember Alexander needs.
I'd like to stay on that.
Okay, need one more person?
I can join you on that one.
Okay, Kalfis. Okay, we've scratched the Infill Land Use Legislative, Legislative, scratch out, local control, Ad Hoc Subcommittee. We need two members.
We're going to, Mr. Mayor, we're going to put that to the decision of the council if there is, I think Randy and I were discussing today, we're, we're not sure that there's like a agenda that kind of goes along with that subcommittee. So it might be something that the council could consider scrapping. And if something does come up in the future, we can certainly form an ad hoc if needed.
Yeah, I'm comfortable scratching it. Is, if there's, unless there's an objection, we can just scratch it through.
I support that.
I agree, yeah.
Okay. Sorry, Legislative Ad Hoc Subcommittee, you are gone. Okay, Marietta Creek Project Ad Hoc Subcommittee. I'd like to stay on that, but we need one more person.
I'll do it if you, yeah.
Thank you very much. Old Town Civic Center Ad Hoc Subcommittee, Alexander and Stewart is.
I'd like to stay on that if I can.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's totally fine with me. Any objections to that? No? Okay. Promenade in Temecula Ad Hoc Subcommittee. We need two members there.
I'd like to do it.
I'll do that one with you.
Okay. Stewart and Alexander. Public Safety Ad Hoc Subcommittee, Alexander and.
I can do that one.
Kalfis. Roar Paw Ranch, AKA Somers Bend Ad Hoc Subcommittee, myself and one other.
I can join you on that one.
Okay. Councilmember Kalfis and myself. Seraphina Property Ad Hoc Subcommittee. That is in District Four, I want to say.
I'll be on it.
I'll join you. Service Level Assessment Ad Hoc Subcommittee, myself and Stewart. I'd stay on that. We've kind of been, although we didn't have anything the last little bit, we were kind of digging through a lot of that stuff, so I'd stay on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Short-term Vacation Rental Ad Hoc Subcommittee, myself and Stewart. I don't have a problem getting off of that if someone wants it, but I'll stay on if no one wants it.
I'd go on that one with you. Or with me.
Okay, so Councilmembers Kalfis and Mayor Pro Tem Stewart. Strategic Fiscal Planning Ad Hoc Subcommittee will need two. I'll do it.
I'll do it.
We're going to be busy, Mr. Stewart.
Mayor Schwank, I am sorry. I actually, the short-term Vacation Rental Ad Hoc Subcommittee, that is recommended for deletion because the ordinance is complete. And it is reflected under the descriptions as deletion.
Okay.
So if we can go ahead and take that one off, that'd be great.
Delete that. I'll put a line through it. Sorry, Stewart and Kalfis. All right. Supportive Housing Services Ad Hoc Subcommittee. I'd like to stay on that. And we would need one other person.
I'll jump on it. Has anybody else wanted to do that, or? Okay. I'll do that one.
Trails Open Space Ad Hoc Subcommittee, myself and Stewart. I'd like to stay on that. Any objections? Okay, moving on. TVE2 Small Business Incubator Ad Hoc Subcommittee, Alexander and Stewart. Any objections there?
No.
Nope.
Uptown Temecula Ad Hoc Subcommittee, Alexander and, I'll join that with you.
Okay.
Alexander and myself. And wowee, wow, wow, we did it. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve the 2023 City Council Committee assignments.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Let us vote. Okay, that passes five zero. Thank you, everyone. We'll move to items for future agenda. This is an opportunity for any council member to request an item for future agenda. Does anyone wish to request anything?
I do.
Mayor Pro Tem Stewart.
Yes. I would like to request a ad hoc committee to look at what it would look like to stand